That seems good.
Hello? Hello?
Okay. Yeah. Is the mic in a good spot?
Hello? Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So are you comfortable? Are you good? Do you need to do anything else?
No.
All set?
No.
Good job. Wow, nerves of steel.
Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll leave this room.
Okay.
So then she just has to come up and she'll be good.
Perfect. That's great. So you all set? You're comfortable? You've probably seen with the microphone.
Yes.
A lot?
Yes.
Yep. Awesome.
I'll get one more. Either the mic or the place they're going to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great there. Awesome.
Okay.
One, two. Awesome.
Hmm.
Well. Oh, that was great. You guys are good.
Hi, Mayor Watson.
Are you our singer today? I'm Jim Watson. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
And what school do you go to?
Saint Marc's.
Saint Marc's? That's a great school. They do a lot of charity work at Saint Marc's.
Yes.
They have a big canned food drive.
Yeah, they just started.
And what grade are you in?
Seven.
Grade seven, great. Well, here's your councillor here. Can we get a picture here? Here, we'll move this by the flags, I think.
Come here.
Over here. Good luck today. We do a great job. We have a great councillor here.
Thank you, you guys here.
Yeah, we checked tonight, so it's all good. They put it up nicely.
So don't get nervous. When I introduce you, and when I finish, you can just rip it up. Take your time. Breathe. You need water or something?
I already have some.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
She's a professional.
I like it.
So I said, I can't believe how calm she is.
I know. I'm more nervous than her.
I don't even do karaoke.
I was just like, I'm looking, I'm like, I'm more nervous than her, and she's looking.
You'll do great.
So is this your dream to unphase things professionally?
Yeah.
Good for you. And be part of a girl man?
Maybe.
Oh, a girl man's okay? Better than boy band? Alright, maybe you could be the next Taylor Swift. And I'll say, hey, I knew so bad. So what are you missing this morning at school?
History and language are not complete.
Oh, so what's your favorite then?
Uh, art.
Art, yeah, yeah. How about you're doing music right now? Ah, well, you're kind of doing like music here. How about math and science?
Science.
So you mentioned that council before. So yeah, and sometimes depending on the topic. We've been really into it during all the season, very tough. But today we're not talking about any of those things. Very soon we'll have a mayor called this into our. All good? Yeah. Do you recognize any of the faces here?
I've met them here. I don't remember.
When did you meet them?
It was a few years ago. It was like my aunt's craft fair or something.
And he just stopped by and said that type of thing?
Yeah.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start the meeting in just a moment if members of council could take their seats. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs, and welcome to the October 28th, 2015 council meeting, City of Ottawa. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of reflection? Thank you. If you could remain standing as councillor George Gueruz introduces our very special guest who will sing our national anthem. Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to welcome a 12-year-old resident of Asgard War to our city council. We are very fortunate to have the Stalin singer perform "Oh, Canada" this morning. Savannah Alder has been singing ever since she first learned how to speak. She has never received any formal training, but that hasn't stopped her from participating in many talent shows at school in her pen in her community, including Greeley Idol. This Saint Mark student also loves to dance and play piano. At school, Savannah is very involved in the Glee Club, the Social Injustice, and the DE Club, which involve working with developmentally challenged kids. Somehow, this busy schedule, with this busy schedule, Savannah also finds the time to sing with both her church and school choirs. We are expecting great things from this young lady. I encourage everyone here this morning to remember the name Savannah Alder, as she will definitely be a big star someday. Thank you. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons commend. Car ton bras s'est portés les pays, ils s'éportaient la croix. Ton histoire était l'époque des plus brillantes espoirs. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Savannah, that was amazing. Thank you very, very much, and a real pleasure to have you here at City Hall. This time I'd invite Aldes Belfay to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award, and ask Mr. Belfay's ward councillor Bob Manette, as well as councillors Steve Blay and Jody Minnick, will both work with Mr. Belfay and the community to join us as well. Welcome.
Thank you.
Councillors. Aldes has been volunteering with the Orleans Bengals for many years, and in that time, he's committed an estimated 1,000 hours to the organization, its teams, and its athletes.
In that time, he has committed an estimated 1,000 hour to the organization, its teams, and athletes.
Bengals Club was established in 1973. It has been providing recreational opportunities to youth aged 7 to 19 since its creation. While the club has achieved many championships and accolades over the years, thanks to Aldes's leadership, the Bengals have strived for excellence off the field as well. In 2012, the club's Be a Bengal Not a Bully program won the prestigious Royal Ottawa Inspiration Award in the community category. This program would not have been possible without Aldes's leadership and dedication to securing sustainable funding. Be a Bengal Not a Bully is a youth-led initiative that brings the anti-bullying message to the community on and off the field. The program Be a Bengal Not a Bully.
Be a Bengal Not a Bully is a youth-led initiative that brings the anti-bullying message to the community on and off the field.
He pioneered the Streets for Kleats program, which secures the appropriate equipment for athletes when they're unable to do so themselves, primarily for economic reasons. Always having the players as the priority, once an athlete in need is identified, often a mystery donation for fees or a spare set of cleats happens to show up in the player's size.
Always having the players as the priority, once an athlete is in need is identified, often a mystery donation for fees or a spare set of cleats happens to show up in the player's size.
Aldes's many contributions to the club, its athletes and families involved, always come with no strings attached, and he accepts no recognition. He always ensures the athletes have every tool at their disposal to pursue their dreams regardless of the personal impact.
He always ensures that the athletes have every tool at their disposal to pursue their dreams regardless of the personal impact.
His commitment to the many athletes who have and will continue to pass through the Bengals Club in Orleans, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award, and thank you for your job. Well done, Aldes. Come on over here, guys.
The St. Hummer Brothers Award is a campus saying that Tynick was hit by an ice cube. Black Mayor Watson told me a few years ago, a community is like a ship, everybody ought to be prepared to take the helm. To avoid my passion, I'm here today. When I began this journey, I knew it could affect a real positive change for youth, especially less affluent youth and at risk. It's a child's word on heaven to my head and hand gate. Most kids wouldn't bless their birth parents and their working parents, so I want to pay it forward. And this is that I would be, I would personally thank Mayor Watson, who has fast becoming the greatest mayor in our city's history. For someone who moved to Orleans in 2002, I can tell you, it's never been better than it is right now. As such, I'd like to thank the three recent TV councillors who helped me accomplish so much for so many. Councillor Middick is wasting no time in helping to support the community that I've never seen before. Councillor Minat readily makes himself a do-gooder to any good cause and has always been there for our club. But to be honest, Councillor Benadry has more credit than I do. I also like to proudly thank local business partners, such as Time Rack, Madamie, more specifically, Michelle Taggart, Darren Anderson. They're the light, the unseen light to many darkness kids that we are effectively positively changed to. The people who should be up here more than I, Tammy Cop, nobody ever can, nobody even can be found. And Coach Williams seems to care more about outside the white lines as he does inside the white lines. And last but definitely not least, the people who matter most to me, who sacrifice the most, and who unconditionally support me, for better, for worse, for worse, I'll bet, Stephen Bear and Tim.
A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consigliere Minat?
Present.
Councillor Middick?
Here.
Councillor Harder?
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Present.
Councillor Ashantiiri?
Present.
Councillor Cadri?
Present.
Councillor Taylor?
Si.
Councillor Shirelli?
Here.
Councillor Egway?
Here.
Councillor Deans?
Here.
Councillor Tierney?
Present.
Consigliere Pliri?
Si.
Councillor Nusbaum?
Here.
Councillor McKenney?
Present.
Councillor Leaper?
Here.
Councillor Brockington?
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko?
Present.
Consigliere Cutier?
Present.
Consigliere Blay?
Present.
Councillor DeRouze?
Here.
Councillor Moffett?
Here.
Councillor Kakush?
Here.
Councillor Hubley?
Here.
Mayor Watson?
Si.
The perma-10, Mr. Mayor.
Merci.
You have gone.
Full confirmation of minutes from the meeting of October 14, 2015. All right. Declaration of interest, including those originally rising from prior meetings, declaration de confidérés. Communications, none received. Regrets? No regrets filed. Motion to introduce reports, motion important presentation de rapport, conseil Egli et McKenney, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ottawa Board of Health reports four employee in camera, Community Protective Services Committee report eight, Planning Committee report 15B, and Transit Commission report six, be received and considered. That the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the Planning Committee report 16, item eight of the agenda, subsection 29.3 of the Procedure by law 2014-441, due to timelines. This is the last scheduled council meeting prior to the unchairing municipal board hearing for 1445 to 1451 Wellington Street, which will reconvene in early November. And pursuant to subsection 35.2 and 35.5, the Procedure by law 2014-441, council is being asked to consider the zoning and planning subdivision 6279 Fernbank Road, item contained in Planning Committee report 16, item nine of the agenda.
On the motion, carried.
Carried.
Okay, merci. Reports, Ottawa Board of Health report number four, rapport numéro quatre, Conseil de Santé, d'art, law, 2015 operating Q2 budget for the Board of Health. Carried. Thank you, Councillor Cadri. Secondly, Ottawa Board of Health report four A in camera. This is the appointment of an associate medical officer of health. Is there any reason to go in camera? On the motion as presented by the Board of Health, carried. Thank you. Committee reports, rapport de comité, Community Protective Services Committee report number eight, rapport numéro huit, le comité des services communitaires et de protection. Item three, Accessibility Advisory Committee, 2015-2018 work plan, comité consultatif sur l'accessibilité plan de travail 2015 à 2018. Carried. Item four, Arts, Culture, Heritage, and Recreation Advisory Committee, 2015-2016 work plan. Carried. Dissent by councillor Brockington. Item number five, City of Ottawa Older Adult Plan. I know councillor Deans would like to offer a congratulatory note.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Chair of the Community and Protective Services Committee and co-chair of the Seniors Roundtable, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank the city staff, as well as the many volunteers or members of the roundtable for all their hard work on the 2015 to 2018 Older Adult Plan. With seniors outnumbering youth in numbers for the first time ever in Canada, I think it's very important that we maintain a focus on supporting and addressing the needs of our older adults. With this new plan, we'll continue to uphold the vision and long-term goals adopted as part of the city's focus on seniors, as well as commit to 51 new actions. I look forward to council's support on this document and to continuing to work on this very important issue. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. On the report, carried. Merci. Item number six, Ottawa Fire Services, provision of dispatch services to other municipalities, service d'incendie d'Ataua, prestation de services de répétration des équipes d'urgence à d'autres municipalités. Carried. Item number seven, City of Ottawa Renewed Public Art Policy, la politique de la ville sur l'art public. Carried. Clarification, councillor. Carry.
I just have a question around the response. So the letter that was provided following the committee, could you clarify the source of funds? It needs to be on a tax base, on a DC? I just would like for some clarification again on that issue.
Mr. Mayor, in terms of sources of funding for capital projects, what we have identified through development of the policy is that DC funding and rate funding for capital projects cannot be pooled and spent elsewhere, in terms of the notion of pooling to develop projects other than at the site. We can still pool within an area, and I think the example that was provided based on your example at CPSC of an area pooling of various streets, let's say, for reconstruction. In most cases, generally, ISD does put those projects together into one tender, and in that case, it would be eligible for public art, but it would be in that location.
Thank you. I just want to highlight the importance of the 30 years of that policy and reflect to you that the pooling opportunity will be really well-received for communities in terms of the ability to improve a park or an area as we see some of these projects happening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Carried. Planning Committee report number 16, comité de l'urbanisme, rapport six, official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment, Ontario Municipal Board settlement 1445 and 1451 Wellington Street. Carried. Dissent by councillors Leaper, McKenney, Nusbaum, and Chernoshenko. Thank you. Item number nine, zoning and planning of subdivision 6279 Fernbank Road, zonage et plan de lotissement 6279 chemin Fernbank. Carried. Dissent by councillor Cadri. Thank you. Bulk consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented. Carried. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption de rapport, councillor Egli, please, seconded by councillor McKenney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ottawa Board of Health reports four A and four A in camera, Community Protective Services Committee report eight, Planning Committee reports 15B and 16, and Transit Commission report be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion, carried. Motions of which notice have been previously given, motion dont avait été donné entièrement. Councillor McKenney, seconded by myself, councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am absolutely honored today to have the opportunity to present this motion with the strong support of yourself, Mr. Mayor, in recognition of MAD Ottawa's 25th anniversary. We are all aware that thousands of Canadians have been injured or killed as a result of impaired driving. Today also Greg Thompson is with us from MAD Ottawa. Greg, thank you. Greg lost his son Stan in an accident due to impaired driving in 1999, along with four other youth who had just graduated from high school in Kanada. Since then, he has been an outspoken and strong advocate, mostly speaking to students about the effects of impaired driving, sharing his story and the experiences of many others. So thank you. Thank you for being here today, Greg. So today, we do have the opportunity to establish a local memorial where victim families and friends can come together to reflect and remember their loved ones by the fountain on the Lorient side of City Hall. Did you want me to read the full motion or just the therefore, yeah, so therefore be it resolved that MAD Ottawa be granted permission to install a small memorial marker at the site of the fountain at City Hall, and that the Public Works Department continue to maintain the fountain as part of its existing maintenance program for Ottawa City Hall?
I want to join councillor McKenney in thanking Greg Thompson very much. Greg has, in many ways, become the face of MAD Canada's Ottawa chapter, and I know I've seen him at a number of community events, and obviously, he was touched by a tragic occurrence, the loss of his son. And I think probably sadly, almost everyone in the country has had some impact or been touched in some way or another, known someone who's been killed or injured. I was hit by a drunk driver at the corner of my car, was at Booth and Gladstone, and it was obviously a traumatic experience because the police officer said if it was an extra second or so, the impact would have been directly on my door as opposed to the passenger's door on the other side. And so, this is a small gesture for family members who have lost a loved one to come and grieve and to reflect and to pray, and I thank councillor McKenney very much for bringing this initiative forward, and I thank Greg, all of your Ottawa chapter members, for the tremendous work that you do in advocating on behalf of those who have lost a loved one, and reminding everyone, students and everyone else, the terrible consequences of what happens when you get behind the wheel of a car intoxicated. So we very much appreciate this, and I'm sure all of council will be fully supportive of this, and we look forward to seeing the plaque and the marker sometime, I assume, in the near future. So our thanks are to you and to MAD Canada. On the motion, carried. Thank you. The next motion is by councillor Elshantiiri, I'm sorry, councillor Tierney's motion, seconded by councillor Moffett, with respect to proliferation of ebook devices. Councillor Tierney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I did circulate to members of council some examples of why this motion is important. I'll save you the long read of it and give you the nutshell version, is we want to make sure that through you, Mr. Mayor, we send a letter to the Department of Canadian Heritage and Industry Canada, asking the federal government to include the examination of publishers' restrictive practices in making ebooks and e-magazines available to public libraries, including the higher prices charged to public libraries, and the upcoming statutory review of the Copyright Act. I will also add that as the Ontario Chair for FCM, I have spoken with FCM, they do see this as a national issue. There's more and more pressure to become more E within our libraries, but the costs make it very prohibitive. So I'm looking for your support today, council.
Great. Thank you very much, councillor, and also in your capacity as Chair of the Library Board, you're seeing firsthand the consequences of the rising costs. So on the motion, carried. Adoptée, merci. Motion's requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. The first is by councillor Elshantiiri, seconded by myself. This is a request from the city treasurer. On waiving the rules of procedure, carry. Councillor Elshantiiri, if you could introduce, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as you indicated, this motion presented on behalf of staff, on behalf of the treasurer. And without going through all the red flags, Mr. Mayor, if I can get everyone's attention to where the city's investment management consultant on the Endowment Fund, AON Hewitt recommends that the prudent investor standard approach as more appropriate approach to investing. Therefore, be it resolved, the city council approve that the mayor send a letter to the Minister of Finance and Minister of Municipal Affairs, asking that the Municipal Act 2001 on the Ontario Regulation 438-97 amended to the Ontario Regulation 399-02 be amended as follow. Specific, the City of Ottawa Endowment Fund, Ontario Regulation 399-02, are the addition of wording under the clause 4.1 that will specifically allow the City of Ottawa Endowment Fund to invest in a way that will move to the prudent investor standard and away from the prescribed investment highlighted in the Municipal Act. Specific of the city, to the City of Ottawa, internally managed funds, Ontario Regulation 399-02, the addition of the new clause that will specifically allow the City of Ottawa to invest internally managed funds in a way that will move the prudent investor standard and away from the prescribed investment highlighted in the Municipal Act. So, Mr. Mayor, just so you can write to two ministers to allow us the movement with the fund.
Thank you, councillor Leaper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question with respect to the prudent investor standard. What new classes of investment would that allow the city to invest in compared to the prescribed classes that are in place now? And is there actually a desire on the part of the treasurer's office to move into some of those classes?
Right now, excuse me, right now, the Municipal Act restricts our investments for the Endowment Fund to Canadian equities and Canadian bonds, so we are not allowed to invest outside of Canada. Whereas, we already manage two pension funds, and we are allowed to invest those funds in the US, in Europe, in Asia, in basically whatever you determine through an analysis of your investment objectives and your risk tolerance, where you should go. So what we're looking for is to have basically the same type of ability for both the Endowment Fund and then our own, the funds that we invest on a daily basis, not the pension plans, but basically the $1.6 billion we invest on a daily basis, to have the ability to determine, in fact, if we need to invest in something for a longer term or for something that's outside of Canada, we would have that ability. But primarily, this change is not so much in what we invest in, but it is about how we make the determination, the thinking that goes in before you make that investment. And we already have moved to that, which is an examination of, like I said, your objectives with respect to your investments, what you're trying to achieve, your risk tolerance. And we go through all of that process, and then we run up against what's prescribed.
And we go through all of that process, and then we run up against what's prescribed in the Municipal Act, which is after we've done all that analysis, we can only basically buy Canada and Ontario bonds, bank of bank, AAA banks, and other municipalities. That's all we can invest in.
How much is our Endowment Fund currently earning?
The Endowment Fund right now is, we've earned 6.5% on that since its inception, which was 2005, I believe. So it's a good, healthy earn for us, but it takes work, and we need, right now with the economy being stalled in Canada and our limitation only being in Canadian equities and Canadian bonds, the return is not as healthy as it has been in the past, which is why we'd like the ability to do other things with it.
So with this additional flexibility, you'd anticipate earning a better rate of return then?
A better rate of return and also what we're seeing, and I know the councillors who sit on the COSF Pension Board know this, is what we're seeing is that even though the returns may be lower with your investments in, for example, in the United States, the fact that the Canadian dollar has dropped so much, in fact, increases your returns because once you convert those American dollars into Canadian dollars, it offsets the fact that the actual return on that investment is down. So it's one of the ways that you insulate yourself from the shifts in the market, the ups and downs in the equity markets.
If this move were made to the prudent investor standard with the greater flexibility, does that require any mechanisms internally in terms of what we will and won't invest in, or is it delegated to staff to make prudent choices?
One of the things that's happened as a result of our notification from the province that we had to have this approved by council before October 31st is we actually have an investment policy in front of FedCo next week. And that talks about the changes that we're recommending with respect to how we make those determinations, how we monitor, how we report, all with the objective of us moving to the prudent investor standard.
So a very transparent investment strategy. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, good questions, councillor. Thank you. On the motion, carried, adopte. Any other, oh, we do have one other, I'm sorry. Motion by Councillor Middick, seconded by Councillor Chernoshenko. This is on the Ottawa Fury and Red Blacks, that the rules of procedure be waived. Carried. Councillor Middick, if you'd like to introduce the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. As we know, well, first of all, as sports commissioner, this is an exciting one because we have a couple of young teams in town, and they're both doing outstanding work and making Ottawa proud. I'd like to recognise though Bernie Ash and Randy Burgess of the Ottawa Sports Entertainment Group because it's their leadership really that I think is showing the dynamics of these two teams, but I'll get on with it because it's a little long, and I gotta read it all. So whereas the Ottawa Fury FC have been Ottawa's professional soccer club since 2014, and in just their second season, the Fury have earned a playoff berth by winning the North American Soccer League's fall season. The first in franchise history will host the semi-final playoff game at TD Place on November 8, 2015. And whereas the Ottawa Red Blacks, Ottawa's Canadian Football League team, have also earned a postseason playoff berth with a strong performance in the CFL's East Division. And whereas the Glee Business Improvement Area and the Ottawa Sports Entertainment Group have confirmed that they are supportive of identifying Bank Street as Fury Way, Voie de Fury, from Bank Street Bridge to the 417 Queen's Way with temporary bilingual commemorative signs at each intersection. And whereas the Glee BIA and OSEG have confirmed that they are supportive of identifying Exhibition Way at Lansdowne as Our Nation Lane, Allé Our Nation, with a temporary bilingual commemorative sign located at the corner of Bank Street and Exhibition Way. And whereas OSEG will be consulted on the design of these signs and have agreed to pay for their production. So therefore be it resolved that the city council approve the placement of temporary bilingual commemorative street signs at each intersection formerly identifying Bank Street from Bank Street Bridge to the 417 Queen's Way as Fury Way, Voie de Fury, and the placement of temporary bilingual commemorative street signs at the corner of Bank Street and Exhibition Way formerly identifying Exhibition Way as Our Nation Lane, Allé Our Nation, for the duration of each team's, each team in the playoff as described in this motion.
Good idea. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
At risk of turning this item into the longest one on today's agenda, I just wanted to say it's a pleasure to be able to support this. We've got two teams that in just their second year are not only making the playoffs but doing extremely well, are apparently being very well managed, and are fitting in quite nicely in the neighbourhood. Yes, you heard that. The support for this naming, and I will throw in my little plug here, one of the reasons they fit in so well is that the transportation system, people coming to the games, people have followed the best advice, which is to come by bus, on foot, by bicycle, or to carpool if you have to drive. And we hope they'll keep doing that during the playoffs because that's a key both to the success of these events, but also working well with the community around them, and that's why there's little, if any, opposition to today's motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. On the motion, carried, adopte, merci. Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor Tierney, seconded by Councillor Hughley, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a notice of motion in regards to the National Zero Waste Council, in regards to the reduction of food waste, and I'll give a more wholesome discussion at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other notices of motion? Motion to introduce bylaws, please. Councillor Egli and McKenney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That bylaws list on the agenda under motion introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, Règlement de Retification. Councillor Egli and McKenney, please.
That the following bylaw be read and passed from the proceedings of council meeting of 20th of October 2015.
Carried. Councillor Brockington, on a point of order with respect to the motion that councillor Tierney brought up on ebooks, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to thank councillor Tierney for championing this cause. I forgot to mention when we were debating this, if I could just offer a suggestion, there is strength in numbers, and I would just like to offer that the Canadian School Boards Association may be in a similar predicament, and if the FCM is going to discuss this, we may have some friends in the same boat. Just put that on the floor. Thank you.
Councillor Tierney.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. I'll definitely take that under consideration and pass that along.
Thank you. Written inquiries, we have one from councillor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Montreal, Bay, Edmonton are a few municipalities that make use of the Open North Citizen Budget Survey online tool. Citizen Budget allows for people to participate in a survey and actually simulate balancing budgets, kind of what we do. Can we get staff to look into the possibility of using a tool similar to this as part of our next, the 2017 budget cycle? And I'll tell you just from personal experience playing with the tool, and I showed the mayor we kind of kicked the tyres on it, I think there's a good opportunity to get more feedback from our residents, and this might be the tool to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Adjournment, councillor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the proceedings of the city council meeting 20th of October 2015 be adjourned.
Carried. Carried. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup. Meeting adjourned.